Okay, it is 5:30 on November 19th, 2025. I'll call this meeting of the Morton County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. We'll start off with a Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Buckley.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Berger.
Here.
Rohr.
Here.
Tomac.
Here.
Wald.
Here.
Zachmeyer.
Yes.
L.
Here.
Okay, everyone is present. Approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda for November 19th for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. An approval of the minutes from October 22nd.
Mr. Chairman, a move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right, item number one, Natalie.
Okay, we're seeing black and white to save color copies and because it's all agricultural around that lot. So our first item is the Shantz subdivision. This is in the northwest quarter of Section 22, Township 139 North, Range 84 West. This is located just north of Judson, right off the interchange. The applicants are Michaela Shantz and Jeff Lenny. They are looking to divide one residential lot from a quarter section and rezone from agricultural to residential. It is a 4.96 acre lot. So they would have just the lot carry the lot out to the center line of the road so they don't need an easement. It would just be part of the lot. So same thing there. We do, for County Road 84, we do have right-of-way plots that were recorded, but there were no deeds associated with them. So just for sake of covering our bases, they are dedicating 75 feet of right-of-way and then the 40-foot access easement just on that little gooseneck of land here. So staff is recommending approval and I can take any questions.
Any questions for Natalie? Okay, not seeing any. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak, please come up to the podium. Second call for the hearing. Third and final call, and I'll close the hearing. Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to recommend approval of the final plat of the short-form subdivision known as Shantz subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential, as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code and is in keeping with the land use properties established in the 2045 comprehensive plan.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item number two.
Our next item is the Solar Meadows Third subdivision. This is in the northeast quarter of Section 21, Township 139 North, Range 82 West. So this is the end of the business loop. This is going out to the truck stop and then this is 139 continuing. So the subject property is here. So when this was first subdivided, it had a set of utility easements. It was re, or the lot lines were adjusted in Solar Meadows Second. And at the time that Solar Meadows Second was recorded, the plat didn't show those original utility easements, which were actually, so in other words, like where structures were sitting and where utility easements were, there were easements and lot lines going through buildings. And so they tried to fix it with Solar Meadows Second. So the lot lines got adjusted, but the utility easements did not. So this is the coming back in and adjusting those utility easements to go where the property owners currently would like them to go and also to facilitate some power coming in on the north side. So the property owner to the north is aware of this plat and Morgansu is aware of it, the utilities are aware. So because the best, my estimation of the best instrument to accomplish this is a subdivision plat so that, because the county has to sign off on accepting where utility easements go, but this is not a new subdivision, this is not a new division of lots. So I guess my suggestion would be technically because it has three lots, it's supposed to go in as a long form, but all we're doing is evaluating utility easements and the correction to them. And I know the property owner is very anxious to get some stuff done with power yet this season. So I guess I would suggest if you are comfortable with it, send it straight to County Commission next Tuesday if you are comfortable with the changes to the utility easements. So again, just changes to utility easements.
Okay, any questions for Natalie? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak on Solar Meadows Third. Second call for the hearing. Third and final call, and I'll close the hearing. So Natalie, do we need something specific in the motion to send it directly to County Commission?
Yeah, I would and just say that the recommendation, approve the plat and accept the utility easements and send it straight to County Commission at the next available meeting.
Thanks.
Okay, I would move to recommend approval of the final, no, it's not the final. Is this the final?
You could call it the final. It's drafted that way.
Okay, the flat, final plat of the long-form subdivision known as Solar Meadows Third subdivision with adjustments to utility easements. It's not a new subdivision and that it would go directly to County Commission on November 25th.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item number three.
This is North Country Estates Third subdivision. This is in the southeast quarter of Section 24, Township 140 North, Range 82 West. The applicant is CF Properties LLC. They are looking to reconfigure boundaries between three lots that exist in North Country Estates. So all of this is residential. This is agricultural around it. So we did see this last month, the preliminary plat. The applicant has asked for slight changes to the lot configuration, making this lot a little bit smaller. I think this came up that way last time. So a slight shift in the property boundary. Staff is recommending approval if the change is not objectionable to others in the subdivision. And I can take any questions.
Any questions for Natalie?
I do, Mr. Chair. Natalie, do you remember how many acres it was before Lot 2?
Let me check. I have it in the packet from last month. Actually, I can just put that, I'm gonna get that plat and put it up there. So it used to be 37.5 and for that Lot 3, the big one, and now it would be 43.6. So this is, that's what it used to be. And that's the proposal for the final.
So Natalie, can you tell us why they made that change?
I think it was so that there's the least amount of acreage with that middle lot. It's just a driveway and a structure. I think that was the idea. The applicant's consultant could probably elaborate a little bit more.
Okay.
Anything else for Natalie? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Jackie, did you want more elaboration from Mark?
Yeah, Mark, could you address my question, please?
Good evening, Commission. Mark Isaacs with Independent Land Surveying and Engineering. The main reason that we changed that, the line between Lot 2 and 3 went over to the top of the hill and the owner wanted that hill to remain all on the big lot, which is Lot 3. And so that, yeah, where that top, where that line jogged before, that was the top of the hill. He wants that all onto that lot to the west. And yeah, that was the main reason, to just keep that with the big lot.
Yeah, it's a reduction about six acres.
Yep.
Because I have the old map here, so.
Yep. So it's still, the middle lot is still a very big lot. I mean, it's 11, is it 11 acres? Yeah, 11 acres.
Really in odd shape, but I guess it works.
Yep. The lay of the land is odd out there.
Yeah, it is.
Quite hilly, so.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, second call for the hearing. Third and final call. I'll close the hearing. Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, do we need to open it up so they can talk?
No, I think just throughout the, throughout the meeting, anybody online during a public hearing, if you'd like to speak, just take yourself off mute. I guess if there's anybody that wants to speak on the site online, go ahead and unmute now. Okay, I think we're good. Still closed. Ready for a motion?
I move to recommend conditional approval of the preliminary plat of the long-form subdivision known as Monte Rancheros at 6th subdivision, only if the plat we configured with 3, oh, 2, I'm sorry. Whoa.
And that's my apology if I put the wrong wording in there. It's the final. I'm sorry.
Okay. Just trying to follow the format here. Okay, I move to recommend approval of the final plat of the long-form division known as North Country Estates Third Division, as the subdivision conforms to regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code and changes in keeping with the established character of the subdivision.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item number four.
Our next item is Monte's Rancheros 6th subdivision. This is in the northwest quarter of Section 8, Township 138 North, Range 82 West. This is located here, so we have Crown Butte subdivision and then Crown Butte Lake is just a bit that way. The applicant is the estate of Delmer Schlinker. They are not looking for a zone change. It's all residential already. And this is all very well-developed residential with a little bit of agriculture all around it. So the original Monte's Rancheros First, you have the original plat in your packet. These were six lots that were about 10 acres each. This one got broken up outside the subdivision process into three auditors' lots essentially, so none of those are buildable. The applicants are putting that lot back together. They are looking to correct this lot line. It used to go straight through the residence, or the, sorry, the outbuildings that are there. So they are moving that lot line down so that those structures would be all on that lot. They, so the, for Crown Butte Co-op, they have infrastructure here for their water system that serves the whole co-op. And so this plat is reflecting a use and access easement that would be recorded separately, but it would be on the plat, you know, if the correct meets and bounds, to show that the co-op has use and access along that private drive to that area. So that would be another item that this plat cleans up. Originally, the applicants were hoping to split this into five lots. The way our meetings fell this month, Road Commission happened this morning, so I couldn't put recommendations in your packet, but Road Commission and staff both are recommending approval of this preliminary plat with three lots, not five. So it would be this lot and then this would be a lot instead of having two, it would be just the one. And then this would be a lot instead of being split into two, is the suggestion from staff and from the Road Commission. So also, one thing that's correct. So this road, when it was originally platted, Monte's Rancheros First, this is only a 40-foot right-of-way, which is not conforming to our county standards. We have a standard of 80 feet for subdivisions and our policy in the comprehensive plan is to not approve additional lot splits within subdivisions that don't have a conforming road corridor serving them. So that's the reason why I'm recommending and Road Commission is recommending, just keep the lot count where it was initially with Monte's Rancheros First. But they are dedicating 20 extra feet along these lots so that if ever these lots develop on this side, we would ask them to dedicate 20 extra feet and then you would have your complete 80-foot corridor. So we did talk about that on the Fringere Road Master Plan, this section line eventually would be an arterial road and we would ask for 75 feet on that arterial. But that was discussed and it was premature to be asking, they thought that was premature to be asking for that at this moment in time. So they did not recommend asking for 75 feet there. So I can take any questions.
Questions for Natalie?
Natalie, I was just wondering, on that top Lot 1, that's not owned by, that wasn't owned by Delmer, was it?
No, that's, that kind of got added in after the fact because of the, those structures being on the lot line. So the estate is gonna sell essentially what used to be those two lots in Monte's Rancheros First, so was this one and this one.
Right.
But it's gonna be difficult to sell that middle lot if you've got an encroaching property, you know, that somebody else owns. So this is to clean that up. And the north lot owner was gracious enough to participate.
So Natalie, this has five lots and you're recommending that we approve kind of our own version of three?
Yep, so it would be exactly this plat in terms of right-of-way set-asides and easements and so forth, but just approve it with the condition that they change it to three lots for the final.
Do we have any input concurrence from the applicant on that?
They did say that they're comfortable with that. Yeah. And they're here. They can.
Any other questions for Natalie?
Mr. Chairman, on the 75-foot, if this is approved, how are we gonna get that extra footage in the future without, you know, commendation or taking?
We would deal with that when we get a corridor there. It's not creating any new, like that lot that's up there, it just exists. All they're doing is moving a lot line. And someone would have to negotiate with that lot owner. I mean, who knows? Maybe if the county gets back in the business of building arterial roads on their own.
And Natalie, is that the case with extensive reach east and west of this property as well? Right, there's not a right-of-way reserve anywhere else?
Yeah, no, there's, there's just a section line. There's a 33 feet on either side.
So this would be subject to the same as everything else?
So this isn't part of the Metropolitan Planning Road Plan?
It is. It is part of the FAR MP. I struggle with this because from my planning perspective, we should set aside what's planned when it comes up, but I also do see the Road Commission and their point that this, you know, landowner wasn't even participating in this in the beginning. You know, they're not creating anything. So to ask them to dedicate that 75 feet might be a stretch, but I do like to dedicate roadway where it is planned for. And because I think the property next door is probably gonna develop soon and it can be difficult to acquire a right-of-way that's in the good of the public in general, although the question would then be who's gonna construct that road across the top of the subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, though, but that, that road plan was already approved by the County Commission?
It was from 2014. And they are, they're going, we're actually, we just had a steering committee meeting for the update, so that may or may not change, but it's what's in the plan right now. Yes.
Which is approved?
Correct. As an arterial.
Did the Road Commission have any concerns about the future of, because that road plan goes all over the metro area?
It does. And I did try to make that point and I asked specifically, what do you think about that 75 feet? And they said they don't want to deal with it right now.
Well, we can't pick and choose what part of the plan we're gonna use.
That's why Planning and Zoning has their own input into this. You know, it's two different boards giving different recommendations to County Commission. And this does have to come back in December. So if we wanna send some comments to the Road Commission, we can do that. We can bring it back to that meeting and have another set of opinions or not for the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I have the Metropolitan Planning portfolio. I don't believe this was ever addressed. With Metropolitan Planning, they never brought it up at a meeting.
So it's only, I think we only do that if we're trying to amend that plan. Yes, and that would be, it would be an amendment if that's how this would go without it.
Natalie, do we always follow those plans? I mean, just understanding, a lot of those, those are in a lot of ways, long-range, high-level plans, subject to change. So when we plat right-of-way here, and I know this is a section line, so likely follow this, but we permanently encumber the land. Right? And so if that road comes through, they're gonna have to obtain that right-of-way pretty extensively east and west, right? So if that road shifts, we don't necessarily, now they have to come back in, go through a whole process to get rid of the right-of-way.
Mr. Chairman, that's what we discussed this morning, that Road Commission, is that it will be dealt with when and if the road becomes and they can figure out how they're gonna get this 80 feet or the 75 feet. That's what we kind of determined, excuse me Natalie, but that's what we talked about.
Yeah. So to that question of the big context, whatever, you know, so this, just you can see the whole thing. So it's basically just gridded out, you know, you have your arterial along 37th. I mean, that keeps going, going, going. You know, that would be, that's a truck stop, going, 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 you know, into ETA of City of Mandan. The only reason why I was harping on this at Road Commission is just because I think that this is going to develop soon-ish, probably in the next five years. Whoever develops this, from a planning standpoint, we wanna have two points of ingress egress on a bigger development, not just let out on 139A. And so to be able to come out here as well would be very, I mean, would be a good practice. This is, I mean, that road's built to be able, and that's not that far of a stretch, to build a second point of access out there. So I mean, if this was, if we're talking about it here, I'd say, yeah, maybe that's premature. When it's here, I, I mean, I would prefer to see it there, but in other words, that it's not just a far, one of those far-flung like, oh.
The arterial is a long way out. Is that fair?
It could be, right. So if it were a subdivision road, then it would be 40 feet. So maybe it's, maybe it's a more appropriate ask for, instead of 33, you know, seven extra feet or something for that half of the subdivision road. That would be something that could be considered. Yeah.
Andy?
Mr. Chairman, it was an approved plan. There were public hearings on that plan, both at Metropolitan Planning Organization and at this board.
And I agree, Andy. It's just that in my mind, those plans, when I always come to fruition, they're updated on a certain cycle.
It's still standing.
It's still standing, but it does get updated, right? There are.
This isn't an update. This is a total history.
2014 was an update to.
But this is still a disregard of what's currently written.
Right, but reserving right-of-way based on plans can have challenges, I guess is my point. And I think that was the Road Commission's consensus.
It might be a challenge, but now you're just passing it on to another county commissioner, another Planning and Zoning Board to deal with. The plan is there.
Yeah, this would be like a small piece.
If you wanna lessen the feat, but totally not try to protect that corridor, I don't believe is right. Especially when you're looking now at five years of land or is gonna develop and how many times that Metropolitan Planning Organization, they're looking at other places to put interstate off-ramps. Then this has come up when I was on Mandan Planning and Zoning, when they put that one water treatment area in the middle of that area, that was supposed to be an interstate off-ramp. This plan can have a way of coming back. And it's not that far outside Mannan. This isn't like three miles outside of New Salem. I think there needs to be some type of better dedication on that northern one.
Natalie, what's the right-of-way on 139A?
I think it's probably 100. I think it's probably 100, and like, planned, so further east along 37th in the Mandan ETA, they've been setting aside 100 for that arterial, as opposed to 75. I mean, our definition of arterial is 75. I was, I didn't suggest doing 100 because, you know, this is further out, we'd be taking care of it. If a northern bridge corridor goes through, it would be on 37th, and this is the extension of 37th, I mean, granted, this is a ways out from, from that future, bridge, bridge of the future, but it is the same road, just further out. My, my concern is just, I wanna be careful about how we let this develop because Missouri West has limited capacity going north and south, and they said their best capacity to provide water is west of town, kind of in this area, so I just wanna be conscientious about how we're letting it develop.
So, Mr. Chairman, I was just kind of curious, so why does Moes have to give up or do the right-of-way, but then Coontz is right to the west, which would be part of that road, so when do you take his right-of-way?
That's not on, that's not the question for this project. The thing, thing is, this is a new project with a new boundary, and you have to protect the boundary.
Mr. Chairman, Becky, the, essentially, the carrying out of a plan like this, like the Fringe Area Road Master Plan, is that whenever you have a plat come forward, you impose that standard on it. So, it would be, if you're talking about, I don't know where those, I don't know the names associated with each of the other properties, but it would be whenever a plat would come forward, then you would impose that standard, whatever the planned right-of-way is for that property. So in other words, it comes up as the plats come up. Does that make sense?
If the road comes up, then whoever's in that road has to give up their right-of-way.
Right.
Even if they're not part of the subdivision or whatever it is.
Well, no, they would have to, the only way that we're asking for a corridor is if they would plat their property. So if they're not doing anything to it, we're not even evaluating their property. It's just as they bring forward a plat that touches that right-of-way, we would ask for that right-of-way in that plat, reserving right-of-way in that location.
So Natalie, can you just remind me, clarify here, so we have 33-feet on the proposed plat?
Just, because that's the standard section line.
Yeah, and the plan has what?
I will have to look into the fine details of the Fringe Area Road Master Plan, it could be that they're prescribing 100, I think that may be.
So 50 into this property?
Yes. Or what, actually, sorry, no, it would be, well, I mean, total of 100, so minus, minus the 33 that's already there.
So an additional 16-feet, 17-feet, or...
No, 70.
I, I guess I'm not following, are we talking 100 total or 100 on each side?
On each side. It's 200 total.
And 139A is 100 total?
No, no, on each side, so it'd be the same, it'd be like a 139A over again.
Okay.
Sorry.
I just don't know whether we're talking one side or two.
Total? Okay.
So, yeah, so we're, I guess that's where I'm struggling, Andy, like, we're talking about reserving a right-of-way up here where there's not a road, that's twice the size of 139A today, and that's where, like, I feel like it's really far out, like, I understand the plan, I mean, I don't have a strong issue either way, but that is a big chunk of isolated right-of-way, you know, in some ways, but I don't know. I'd like to defer to the Road Commission, but...
Well, they know about the plan, too.
Yeah.
I mean, the county engineer was there, planner was there, it should have been brought up, it should have been, hey, you guys, this is an approved plan, not only approved by us, but also approved by Mandan, Bismarck, Burley, and Lincoln. This is, you know, it's not something that you can just outright ignore. If that was the case, then why have Metropolitan Planning, why have a long-range transportation plan?
No, and I agree, but, I mean, if, if that road comes in, like, they're gonna have to acquire right-of-way.
Well, they may have to acquire it, but that's, every, then all the other easements then can be called into question that we enforce.
I think my big concern is, we just got done with a development where the road hadn't gotten punched through, and it was difficult, and, you know, I think having a road that gets to, you know, that serves the subdivision, in other words, not having to have a loop road, that you actually have a gridded network, is important.
So, I, I mean, I'm certainly in favor of at least going to 40, so we're consistent.
Yeah.
I mean, we're...
I mean, I think that would do a lot.
That makes a lot of sense, I don't know, I'm pretty wishy-washy on asking for 100 when they're kind of just fixing lot lines here.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, that was my struggle, too.
But I think we should try to move on.
There needs to be something put on this, or this needs to be put down. We need to require that there needs to be some type of right-of-way along that northern line, that it's at least somewhat consistent with a plan that's duly approved by every single elected, elected board in the metropolitan area. And if that's the case, then why even have it?
So, maybe, again, this does have to go to Planning and Zoning again in December, so maybe send it back to Road Commission with that comment, you know, just make an extra emphasis and maybe have a discussion about what an appropriate width might be, instead of like, do it or don't do it, you know, maybe have a discussion about the finer detail of what a width might be that's reasonable.
I'm good with that. Jackie?
Well, and, um, it was a recommendation from the Road Commission, it wasn't anything that is cast in stone, just like the five lots instead of, the three lots instead of the five, so it's kind of the same thing. And I guess I do have a problem, too, with giving away, not giving away, taking 100-feet of right-of-way when, that's a lot of...
Well, it's completely isolated at this point, it's just a tiny little sliver, right, and the rest would need to be acquired, and it's not, not an easement, I mean, it's, it's essentially a taking of that land, right, it's, it becomes public property at that point.
Held in the public trust.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the other issue I have with doing that, too, is that if that road ever does come through, all of his neighbors are gonna get paid for it, and he gets nothing, and he's not even part, I mean, he's only participating in this plat to correct a lot line. So that's the other issue I have with this whole discussion.
Well, the world isn't fair on that.
Well...
There were public hearings, numerous, at every elected board.
Andy, I do think we're gonna move on from this, I mean, I totally respect your opinion, I wanna get to the public hearing, and the board can make a decision, all right? If we didn't have a full room, I'd keep discussing, but let's...
Well, this should have been handled, sorry Natalie, should have been handled by county staff, you guys are part of pub, of the Metropolitan Planning Teams.
Andy, we're, I'm gonna, yep, we're gonna move on. Okay, anything else for Natalie? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing, is there anyone that would like to speak on this item?
Good evening, Mark Isaacs again, Independent Land Surveying and Engineering. Just to expand a little bit on what was discussed this morning, and I think it's worth just having this part of your discussion here, it sounds like it's gonna go back to Road Commission, so if there can be some discussion here to give a little feedback down. So Larry Moose, who owns, you know, the north lot there, there was discussion this morning also, that he would be willing to dedicate some right-of-way along the north line if there was a consideration to dedicate, or to vacate that 40-foot corridor that runs along his line. So, so there is no road in that corridor presently, there's no road at all, it deadens into his driveway, and it's a non-conforming county road, the county road, the county does not maintain it, you know, that, so, the ask was, by him this morning, was to vacate that, and if that were vacated, so that wouldn't go through, then, you know, he'd be willing to, to vacate, or to dedicate that north part, so it would be basically a trade of existing right-of-way for dedicated right-of-way. And the thought was, is that if all this develops and that becomes an arterial, your traffic movement would come south anyway, and probably not go on to that, and, you know, that main highway, that's not a standard practice to do, so that was the debate on whether we needed that connection or not. And at that point in time, the discussion went to, well, this is all in the future, we're just fixing lot lines, let's just not deal with it now, and that's the way the conversation ended, so. I would entertain any questions while I'm up here, I know the, the applicant wants to speak as well, so...
Questions for Mark? Mark, is that trade then for the full 100?
Well, this morning, we talked about 75-feet, and I know Larry was in, in favor of doing that, so I, I think it would be in consideration, they just, the road's not there, it's not going through, it, I don't, we don't see that it's gonna affect anything, you know, for future development, so, you know, he and the other neighbors would like to vacate that, so I think that would be a, you know, a trade-off for, right-of-way for right-of-way.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, but there was one Road Commission member that was definitely against vacating, so...
He never wants to get rid of right-of-way.
Right.
Yep.
And so that's gonna come up again.
And, and I appreciate that, and that's why I thought in this case, you know, you would be giving and taking right-of-way. I understand the county doesn't wanna just give back right-of-way they have, but in this case, you could, you could literally justify by trading that, if, if so choose.
Anything else?
I do have one for you, Mark, so in, if that, if that right-of-way was vacated, would that affect lot number, what is that, two, at all? The one to the west?
No, because they all access off of 29th.
Okay.
There is no, so I, on this drawing, you can see all the dwellings and the driveways for the lots to the west, they all access off of a different road.
Okay, just making sure.
So they do, they don't access that. We, we could, yeah, make some provisions that if that owner to the west, they could still have access if they wanted to. Larry, does he, does he access any of that from your side now?
Yes, he can.
He, if he can, did, I mean, he does just to check his fence or whatever?
Two of them can, one farther north, and Randy, the middle one there, they both, they can use that road.
Right, yeah, I'm just talking about the north one. No, they don't use, that's what I thought.
Anything else for Mark? Thanks, Mark.
Commissioner Will Gardner, Realtor with Century 21 Morrison Realty, I'm representing the Schlecker family, I'm the listing agent for the property. I'll be brief, but points are important, but I'll just be brief. The density of that area, if you look to the south of that, I don't have access to the maps, but density to, you're looking at .6 acres, so you're, you're well within, you know, you're not putting smaller properties in, in that kind of area, so I just wanted to make noted that that, that's important to match the density or two, so I feel we're really good there. There's also, you know, in terms of access, access is pretty simple, pretty easy, pretty, pretty easy to do there, so nothing complicated there. And then there's gonna be more development, as Natalie mentioned, new development in that area, so I feel, I feel this is size-appropriate for the neighborhood. Thanks.
Thanks, Will.
I guess my wife inherited that piece of property, what we'd like to do, we'd like to see the four-fives, if it, if we could, we'd, and if it did materialize, we would keep one piece of it, one-fourth. If not, we would, we would settle, we'd be happy with the two tans, too, don't get me wrong. Yeah, that's about it, that's, that's what we're looking at at this time, so, yeah. And then, my notes here, it says it was 29.98 acres, it isn't, it says 20, it's 20, or 19.98 is what the measurements are of the acreage, so, yeah, that's what we'd like to see. Thanks.
Thanks, Mark. All right, I'll do the second-to-last call for the hearing. Natalie, can you switch to people online? If there's anyone online that would like to speak, just go ahead and come off mute. Third and final call for the hearing. And I'll close the hearing. Okay, thoughts from the Commission?
Mr. Chairman, we have two alternatives here, to go with the motion or to send it back to the real board.
Well, this is preliminary, right, Natalie, so I, I think, I think what we'd wanna do is approve some form of the preliminary, and it's gonna come back to us either way. If we, if we wanna just send it, then we would have to get a preliminary back.
Yeah, I, I guess what I would suggest is recommend approving with whatever conditions this board thinks are appropriate, and maybe request, if you want another opinion from Road Commission, or to look at it in a different way, just request that that board discuss it with certain directions, I mean, you can request it.
Chairman Natalie, and those conditions would be, or suggested, recommended conditions?
The, the condition that staff and Road Commission were suggesting is that it be brought back with three lots.
Okay. Which is actually what it says in the motion there.
Right.
And Natalie, that recommendation is based on traffic?
That recommendation from staff is based on our policy in the comprehensive plan, that we are not supposed to further divide existing subdivision lots where there is not an adequate road to serve those lots, like, not an adequate internal subdivision road.
Okay, so we're dedicating the right-of-way, but we're saying that the, the road isn't developed to...
County standard.
County standard.
Correct, it's, like, currently, there's a 40-foot corridor total, we need an 80-foot corridor total. We need an 80-foot corridor total. And what they're dedicating is their side of the extra 20 feet.
Sure.
So at least they've taken care of their side for the future. And then if the other side develops and they do their 20 feet, then you could split up all those lots better or more easily.
Understood, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I guess what we also talked about as far as the three and five lots is that if they were in 10-acre blocks, it would be easier to subdivide that, correct, than doing the five-acre lots.
Right.
And so that's kind of why the road commission kind of recommended it. Some of them recommended, some of them. And some thought that there's no reason why we couldn't have five lots there. So it's, it's just a very, not all of you have been out there. And so Becky has, I have. It's a very narrow road. I mean, it is just gravel, kind of a gravel path out to Dammers. And so not, not everybody that moves from town out to the country is going to want that. I'm talking about a whole subdivision. Me as coming from the country and from my roots, I would be okay with it. But not everybody is that way. And so that's what we talked, a lot of what we talked about.
Is anyone ready to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, another question. So if the neighbor, the landowners to the west were also dedicating the appropriate amount for the right of way, would there be a question as to whether it can be four lots versus the three?
Wait, to the, oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I mean, if we allow lot splits on certain lots, we have to assume that we would allow that on all the lots? And then the amount of traffic that that would put on?
Natalie, I think Carter's asking if, if they could get that right of way from the west side.
Oh, yes.
Would you at all be recommending that it be two instead of four?
Oh, I get it. So part of it is the right of way, and then part of it is the construction of the road. So if that road is not, let's say you did have your 80-foot corridor, but no one has constructed it to our county standard for subdivision road, then we also would be recommending not to further split the lots. So, yeah, thank you for clarifying the question.
Yeah, because who's going to build the road?
Exactly.
Is, was, is the question.
More thoughts from the board?
Well, this is coming back to us again and to get the show on the road, so to speak, and follow the recommend, concurrent recommendations. I move to recommend a conditional approval of preliminary plot of this long-some division known as Monver and Show Six subdivision, only if the plan is reconfigured with three lots or fewer.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not hear any. I'll call the roll. Roar.
Yes.
Tomac.
Yes.
Wald.
Yes.
Zach Meyer.
No.
L.
No.
Buckley.
Uh, yes. Yes, excuse me.
Braun.
No.
Berger.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries. Natalie, I assume you'll see to there being some discussion with the road commission?
Yeah, and I think, I guess I'm not sure when the tack meeting is on, for December, but I think that'll come before the P&amp;Z meeting typically. So in advance of the RMP update, the MPO staff had asked the jurisdictions, okay, how many amendments have you made to the plan? And there are amendments that have been made. So we can bring that forward and see what people's opinions are, so.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I would like to see at a minimum something more than a 33 statutory.
Okay, we'll add that. We'll tack that note on.
Mr. Chairman, the next road commission meeting will be December 17th, and I assume that we're meeting the same day.
Exactly. So it'll be, it'll be a morning to evening turnaround again.
Okay, item number five, I think it is.
So the county commission approved Honey Hills first subdivision, first and second. That approval was made, and then subsequent to that, ND DOT changed, I guess, the way that the stormwater was going to be allowed to, or I guess DOT made some changes that changed the whole stormwater plan for the subdivision. So the applicant's engineer had to reconfigure the stormwater plan. So they're coming back with an adjusted easement for a couple of lots, for lots four and five, block one in Honey Hills first. And so that's all this is. And because the county has to sign off on adjusted easements, this is going to Planning and Zoning Commission and then County Commission just to give permission to change a stormwater and drainagesment. So again, this would be, if it looks copacetic, send it to County Commission at their next meeting to accept.
Any questions for Natalie?
Mr. Chairman, so this is because the ditch block was not lifted, correct?
Exactly.
That's why that, we have that.
That's exactly right.
In case somebody has forgotten.
Yep.
So Natalie, there's no, no hearing. Do we need a formal motion or just a?
I would make a motion, just, just so that it's on record that you looked at it, sending it to County Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Morton County zoning, planning and zoning commission looked at the Honey Hills first, adjustment of easements in lot four and five and is recommending that be approved to the county commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item number six. Thanks, Mark.
Mark, you're leaving when the fun starts.
Mark said so much fun this year. Our next item is the Long Spur Wind Project. I'm not going to go through all the details again. This was at Planning and Zoning Commission last month. It went to County Commission. County Commission recommended sending it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission with the instructions to further review and discuss and evaluate the proposal based on the 2045 comprehensive plan, specifically future land use policy 1.5, the objectives and policies listed in goal number one and goal number two, the zoning compatibility table, and then also section 5-180 of the Land Use Code, which is standards for wind energy facilities, and then review the conditions attached in the original staff report. So this is the revised project map. There had been one property right here that had been shown participating and was not participating.
Natalie, I'm just going to note to the room that there are several open seats up front now. If anybody in the back doesn't want to move up, just so you know, or standing, anybody who's standing.
Yeah, if you want to sit down.
Sorry.
So that got adjusted, and then the detail was added. There is a aircraft detection lighting system tower right on the edge of the project boundary. And so essentially just showing, here's, here's the boundary. It was a red line. Now it's purple. The tower itself is 100 feet tall. And our standard staff's interpretation of any element in a wind energy project is, you know, highest threshold for what your setback would be. So that would be the same as a turbine setback, which is one and a half times. So that will be set back at least 150 feet from the property or the project boundary. So I didn't have color printouts last time, so I'm just going to put that up. And hopefully that's a little easier to see. This is existing turbines in Morton County. The proposed Long Spur project is in yellow. And then these are the, well, this is the county, this is the county boundary. So this is Oliver. These are turbines in Oliver. But anything inside that dark boundary is existing in Morton County, just to give you a sense of what, what exists and what's being proposed. And, yeah, that I will turn it over to you to manage the public hearing, and then I'll have, I'll get deeper into the criteria that we're using to evaluate the project after the public hearing.
Are there any necessary questions for Natalie, though, from the board first? Okay, thanks, Natalie. Okay, so just, I guess, establishing some, some ground rules for tonight. I'm going to give the applicant five minutes to present an overview, summary, maybe update on any additional information, changes since last time. I'm going to try to limit individual speakers then to two minutes each, just in respect of everybody's time. For those of you that were at the last public hearing, last planning and zoning, not necessarily County Commission, but planning and zoning, a public hearing, I'd ask that you try to limit your comments to new comments or brief reiterations of previous comments, to the extent that you can piggyback on others. That's appreciated. So let's keep it respectful, and I'll let the applicant lead us off. Oh, and one more thing. So Natalie is going to try to time, not, well, yeah, your five minutes, I guess, but the two minutes, she'll signal to me, I'm just going to, I'm going to try to keep it gentle, you know, well, raise a hammer in the air. And, you know, I don't want to interrupt if I don't have to, but let's just try to respect that. And, you know, if you have to come up again for something, I'm not saying that's absolutely prohibited, I just want to try to keep things moving more than I want to cut you off. So, there we go.
Good. All right. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mitchell Bettenhausen. I'm the project manager with ALLETE here on behalf of Minnesota Power and the Long Spur Wind Project and its special use permit application. In addition to my roles with ALLETE, I also live, farm, and ranch north of Glenon alongside my family. We have successfully farmed and ranched alongside the Glenon Energy Center owned by ALLETE Clean Energy, as well as the Bison facility, which is owned by Minnesota Power. We also will be operating right along the boundary of Long Spur. So we will continue to do so. It's been working out thus far. ALLETE and its affiliates, including BNI, have been in and around the community for over five decades. This project currently, Long Spur, has been in development for over a decade. Despite the lack of public comment by supporters the last time we were in front of this commission, there is community support for the project. Long Spur has entered into voluntary agreements with over 100 landowners in Morton County. Many of these landowners and other community members spoke in support of the project at the County Commission meeting. We have supporters here tonight that we anticipate will give positive comments as well. If they're here, if they'd like to raise their hand in support. This region of North Dakota combines exceptional wind resources, reliable electric transmission infrastructure, and the strong tradition of coexisting seamlessly with farming and ranching activities, with Long Spur extending that tradition right next to the existing Glenon and Bison projects. Long Spur is estimated to bring in over 25 million to the county across capacity generation and property taxes over its life. This, in addition to over 27 million directed to the state of North Dakota, and does not include salaries from jobs, landowner payments, and other economic benefits, that Long Spur will contribute to the region. This is our second time in front of the commission, and we are here to ask that you review our project under the requirements of your zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan as it exists today, not on how some folks here wish it may, wish it were written. Consistent with the staff's recommendation, we ask that you recommend approval of the project's SUP because of the, because the project complies with all requirements in the Morton County wind energy facility. To the extent, I have additional folks here to speak, I can take questions immediately or however you'd like to go about it.
Any questions for Mitch?
And I guess I'll just add one note. So she talked about ADLS. It does meet the one and a half time tip height, I guess we would call it tip height, so 150 feet. And I don't know if I'd necessarily quantify the map as revised, other than it's still the same project boundary that we spoke on the first and second time. We just took out some green of participating landowners that are outside the boundary, just to clarify. So it's the same map that you guys originally seen. Thank you.
Thanks, Mitch. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, and I do want to clarify, one thing I didn't mention, you know, I gave you, I'm giving you all five minutes, introduce the project again, but, you know, also feel free to join in on the public hearing, especially if you, if there are questions that, you know, you can respond to, so.
Thank you. Good evening, commission. My name is Alexander Lumen with Minnesota Power. I'm an environmental compliance specialist on the Long Spur project. In an effort to address public and commissioners' concerns at the last planning and zoning meeting, I filed a letter to the County Commission detailing wildlife, its shadow flicker, sound, infrasound, and then the Federal Aviation Administration's lighting system and our ADLS lighting system. To begin, concerns around wildlife were primarily around whitetail deer and the perceived decline within the project area. According to the North Dakota Game and Fish Department, there was a significant whitetail deer die-off in 2021 due to episodic hemorrhagic disease, EHD, I'm going to pronounce it from now on. Game and Fish just kept the 2021 die-off as significant, the worst memory, and devastating. And it concluded that it was EHD that was the cause of the die-off of whitetail deer and not wind energy. As part of the North Dakota Public Service Commission setting process, the project coordinates with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the North Dakota Department of Game Service. Neither Fish and Wildlife Service or Department of Game and Fish, or Department of Game and Fish, thank you, have recommended whitetail deer surveys and monitoring for the Long Spur Wind Project. Furthermore, research shows no consistent long-term displacement of large ungulates such as pronghorn, elk, and reindeer due to wind energy facilities. Under North Dakota Century Code 11-33-03, counting zoning regulations shall, in accordance with comprehensive plan, the Morton County Land Use Code requirements for wind energy facilities and development in accordance with Morton County's comprehensive plan, section 130 in the Morton County Land Use Code. The purpose of the Land Use Code is to promote goals of the comprehensive plan. The project complies with Morton County zoning regulations and is a compatible use with Morton County's comprehensive plan. Finally, to address lighting concerns, the project lighting, we submit annual data to the Public Service Commission. Over the past three years, our data shows that lights are off 77% of the time during nighttime, reducing light during night. Livestock concerns were raised by ranchers and farmers at the last meeting. Wind turbines occupy a small area within these sections, and they do not prevent grazing or crop production. Many landowners view turbines as a beneficial source of supplemental income. While there are limited peer-reviewed studies on turbine impacts to livestock, testimony from local ranchers at the previous Morton County hearing, individuals, I hope, can share their experiences again tonight. Thank you.
Nailed it on time. All right. Thanks, Alex. Okay, with that, go ahead and open the hearing to anybody in the room. Just please, if you come up to the podium, well, limit all comments to the podium, and
Good evening. My name is Chuck Edson. I'm here with my wife, Carrie, to show our support for this Long Spur project. We live north of I-94 along Highway 49, and we drive by the ex- We live north of I-94 along Highway 49, and we drive by the existing towers often. Never been offended by them. In fact, we chose to have a positive outlook on them because we feel that the benefits far out range are outweigh the negatives. And a lot of the wildlife things have been covered, and other things, but just one thing, if you do want to read up on the effects on wildlife, everyone that I read on the interstate had this clause in there, or similar to this clause, that a reduction in wildlife around site during construction phase, but numbers tended to return to normal as the construction phase was over. Turbine noise, well, according to Mr. Google, it's 40 to 50, excuse me, decibels, but how loud is that? Well, moderate to quiet is 60 decibels, like a conversation. A refrigerator can put out 60 decibels. I find a refrigerator to benefits far outweigh the noise, so I'm going to keep my fridge. A lot of people will want to get out of the city and they want their nice spot in the country, and that's wonderful. If the kennels find us, well, they'll settle for a building beside a busy highway, or even the interstate, you see it all the time, where they can put up with 80 decibel traffic noise. But it's a choice to make, and they feel the benefits outweigh the negatives, so that's their choice. And these wind turbines, supplemental income was mentioned, and it's huge. This can make the difference between a generational farm, its generational wealth. It's a four-year loan K that I haven't managed to put together, and I'm getting tired, I don't want to work forever. So this is a wonderful boom. 110 landowners, or let's say over 100, I'm pretty confident if they were here, they would be in favor of this project. They've already made their choice because they, I think, would feel the benefits far outweigh the negative as well. So.
Sorry Chuck. I wasn't, I wasn't watching Natalie to give my two-minute warning.
Oh, two-minute warning. Oh, boy. Let's see, where am I? Okay. Well, I guess I'm just going to say, I hope that the commissioners will see the benefits of this, that far outweigh the negative, and I urge that you vote in favor of the project. Thank you.
Well, I'm Jim Swenson from Beale, North Dakota. We own land right in the project. We got a turbine on there now. It was put in at 2012. It was one of the first turbines in our pasture. And it sits on top of the hill. Them little cows go up there, and they'll bed down up there in the summertime. They'll take the wind currents off there. We run about, we'll drop in about 65 head of cow calf pairs in there on that chunk of land. They'll run in there. We have had a good breed up. My wife, my wife is real anal about tracking all our cattle, because we got them all over the place. But those cows, we've never heard a problem. I've heard a guy tell me, oh, you got calving problems from those turbines? We ain't got no calving problems in that, because we, we know if we got calving problems. He says, oh, we get some calves problems around them turbines, not my place. And that, so I mean, my son-in-law was here, and he talked to, about it too, and I'm just saying that we're all for it. I don't know if we'll get another turbine or not, but we support the turbine deal. And like I said, we deal with Highway 49, which I call Interstate 49, and that's because they kill more deer than anything, and that, believe me, they do. And we put up with it on our equipment, moving down and up and down. Never had a problem with the turbine people or anything. We get good roads, you know, over there, because over in Oliver County, I run over in Oliver County, I run in a lot of country, and they got good roads. I got the coal mine too, and that to deal with. And we ain't got a problem there either.
Good evening, commissioners. I have one request before I start. Please don't use that hammer on me.
Anyway, I've been using the gentle one.
Well, maybe that. Anyway, I'm Richard Torado. Once again, I am reaching out to express myself and my family's support of the Longspur Wind Project. Just to reiterate some of the reasons for supporting, the great revenue it creates for the neighborhoods, ourselves and communities, is by far the most important in my eyes and my wife's eyes, wife's and family. We do have the right as landowners, surface rates. We should be able to do this. I do consider my input on the following topics to be genuinely accurate. For my wife and I live in the heart of wind energy products, projects, and our future does not object either, our children and grandchildren. This is more for them as anyone. Scenery, wildlife noise, flicker lights are all complaints you hear from the population that refuses to acknowledge the benefits, or just don't have property within the perimeters of the project. Not everyone, but the majority. We have no problem with any of the above, and if you need to ask me questions about any of that, I'll be willing to answer. Do not, don't let that be a reason to prevent the development of the Longspur project. We feed the people of the world, let's help provide power for them also. Thank you.
Thank you. Didn't have to use the hammer.
Good evening, committee members. My name is Keith Geetson. I live in Morton County in North Glen Allen, North Dakota. I just want to point out a few things. Throughout these committee meetings, my goal has been to preserve the beauty and landscape of North Dakota and to give some examples of the contradictions that we're seeing here. We have made laws that say North Dakota grain farmers dare not drain a prairie pothole to raise more wheat or corn because it endangers the nesting ground of the migrating birds. But yet we allow outside foreign investors to come here, dig massive holes, grind up their toxic garbage, mix it in cement, and bury it in the soil, then build 600-foot structures that destroy the landscape, change the migratory patterns, and kill the very birds that we are trying to protect. Could someone explain to me how any of this makes sense? In the very near future, we will see our electrical needs being fueled by natural gas that is now being burned off as a waste product in the oil field. Nuclear energy will also play a role. When these things come online, and they will, it will reduce the wind farms to nothing more than a bunch of oversized deer stands and a sickening reminder of the mistakes that we're making today. I asked this committee to deny this permit, and that's all I got to say.
My name is Dawn Shepherd. Just for the record, I did send you all emails on studies and links to those studies regarding health and safety of these wind turbines and wind farms. Morton County does have land use codes they have to adhere to regardless of property rights and what people want to do on their land. The health studies that I sent you were done by health departments, scientists, doctors. The wind industry has not done any because they aren't required to by the government. And as far as the setback distances that they set up has nothing to do with health and safety, it has to do with what's convenient for them as far as the continuity and efficiency of the wind turbines. But the setback distances from studies prior to 2015 were recommending because of health dangers, 1.5 to 2 miles minimum. Between 2016 and 2024, newer health studies that are showing specifically silent sound vibrations such as infrasound that can travel between 12 to 26, or 56 miles, I'm sorry, depending on the height of the turbine, the type of soil it's in, and other things. And these will go through buildings right into homes, and they intensify once this gets into homes. These things reveal that they do have adverse health effects on people, specifically circulatory, respiratory, neurological, and hormonal health. And the setbacks now they're recommending are 5 to 7 miles minimum. But what we know with this infrasound from all the studies that I've sent you, and I hope you've read, is that these turbines really aren't safe at all. And not only that, but the construction is definitely, the last gentleman was adhering to that, what they're putting in the ground and all the noise, that definitely, it doesn't take a rock and scientist to know that that's going to infect the environment and have a negative impact. So I would urge you to take the current and updated studies and deny this permit based on the criteria of the Morton County Land Use Special Use Permit and a district regulations. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, I'm Mary Greener, a Morton County resident. I have relatives that are up in that area. I just wanted to point out, because it has been mentioned in the past that there weren't any studies. There's a study in Germany, and it quotes, "With infrasound, wind turbines make you sick." That's from 2019. In 2024, "Research confirms danger from infrasound." A Canadian study from 2021, "Wind turbines and adverse health effects applying the Bradford Hills criteria for causation." Another study from 2014 in Vermont, "Medical doctor sees wind turbine syndrome in his patients." Another one from 2024, "Negatives to wind farms, the main disadvantages of wind turbines." Another study from 2025, "How does wind energy affect the environment negatively?" 2025, "The loss of pollinators, the hidden ecological cost of wind turbines." 2021, "Insect fatalities at wind turbines and biodiversity." That's from 2021. So basically, what they're saying, there's so much going on right now, there's actual links to cancer. Now, we know that there's been a big influx of cancer over the last 10 years. Some people blame it on the vaccine. Some people just don't know why all of a sudden these people are coming down with cancer. But in those reports, and I won't read through all of them, Dawn alluded to the ones that she sent to you. It's all documented in those reports. Dr. Sandy Reader, M.D., it says, "Because infrasound may have serious consequences on human health, it is appropriate that approval of wind turbine facilities be proactive. Safety must be assured before permits are rewarded." Right, now here's one of the reports, and this was sent to you guys as well. And it says, "What about the claim of cancer caused by infrasound?" The Portuguese military study went on to claim the genotoxic component of low-frequency noise has already been demonstrated in both animal and human models. So I know I have simply run out of time, but I will say, in the past, my parents used to put mercury comb on my bruises, my, excuse me, my skin. We thought mercury comb was good for us, it's not. We also thought asbestos was good for us. We used asbestos all over the place, and then we later find out that it's not. So there's so many things that, that are just coming to light now that we really have to have concerns about. Thank you.
Yeah, just a reminder, anybody online that would like to speak, just go ahead and unmute, speak up in between speakers at the podium.
Commissioner, my name is Bill Dupont. I live in Glen Allen, and I am here to express my support for this long expansion of the current wind farm. This project will have a smaller impact on the land and on Morton County residents since existing turbines and infrastructure are already present in the area. My rights as a landowner are also a large concern for me. I should have the option of allowing a wind turbine on my land if all of the requirements are met with the planning and zoning, and with the state, and any other entity that's involved, and if they are all followed by the company. Once again, I support this project. Thank you for your time.
Short comment, sure.
Didn't get this in when you were putting the hammer down up there, but from what I hear, and please correct me if I'm wrong, there's like $25 million coming into the county with this project. How many projects, you know better than I do, are waiting for funding in the county? How many schools are looking at putting curriculum or cutting staff? We're offered a better option, I think we should, I think we should jump on it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bob Hoff. I'm a landowner in the area of the Longspur project. In respect to landowner rights and all that, I'm all for that. But let's look at the population whole. You talk about all this money that's coming in, 25 million here, all these, each tower is going to be paying 19,000. Well, a kilowatt hour is what, 16.72 cents? How many kilowatt hours it is a pay to pay for all this stuff? It doesn't, it never does. All it does is raise taxes and raise your utility rates for everyone. Europe tried, if they tried to go green, they're going back to coal. They have to go back to coal because they can't support themselves, and their energy costs are going so high. So it doesn't work there, it's not going to work here. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over, trying to expect different results. Please stop the insanity.
Is there anyone else in the room? Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Dr. Crystal, so I'm responsible for that paper in your packet that you have there tonight. I'm just going to touch on a few items briefly. I hold a PhD in environmental health sciences. I've worked in the energy sector for the last 25 years on proper setting everything from wind turbines to gas plants to pipelines. I've worked in North Dakota for over 10 years on wind projects and appeared numerous times before the PSE, as well as many counties. So I'm going to briefly touch on sound, shadow flicker, livestock, depending on how much time we get through here. So sound is just simply, you know, you're hearing it from my voice. If you strike the piano keys, it, we measure sound in hertz, so the low key is around 27 hertz, the high key on the piano is around 4,000 hertz, depending on how hard you strike it, that's the decibels. Okay? North Dakota has a very stringent sound level of 45 decibels to protect public health, safety, and welfare of residents. There has been, and you've heard about infrasound, that's what I put in the packet here, there has been 20 years worth of research specifically on wind turbine infrasound living in proximity. Do wind turbines emit infrasound? Absolutely. Every fan in this room is emitting infrasound. A level of infrasound in this room right now is going to be equivalent to what it would be at a home 2,000 feet from the turbines. Quite simply, we've done a lot of research on this. The claims that you've heard tonight are quite simply not true. I've read the papers, they're referring to the credible scientific papers, the medical agencies from around the world will tell you that. With regards to shadow flicker, shadow flicker, the main concern originally was, would it cause seizures in photo epileptic people where they get flash frequency can trigger their seizures? But modern turbines simply spin slow enough to make sure that that doesn't occur. On livestock, there's over 2,200 turbines here in the state. You've had them for over, many of those projects up to 20 years. 75,000 turbines across the US, most on grazing agricultural land. There are not impacts to livestock, you heard that from one of the ranchers. So overall, there's 20 years of research, credible scientific articles, I gave you a handful of those. I've reviewed the Longspur project application. I believe it's I believe it's properly cited and will not impact public health or the residents. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions for Chris? Cool. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm John Hollingsworth. I represent ALLETE. There's a few things that were thrown out. I think the more recent one that I heard was about the financial benefit and what it costs per kilowatt hour and everything else. There's a few things going on in the U.S. right now is data centers. I think we've all heard them. It's going to drive up demand of electricity, and right now is the time to build. As much as we'd like to build gas, nuclear, those projects right now, if we order a generator for gas, five to seven years. Nuke, to get it permitted, probably 15 years if we're lucky. Our company's not big enough to go down that path. So right now is the time that we can act. Renewables are coming in. Great thing about this, Minnesota ratepayers are paying for this project, and North Dakota's taking the benefit of taxes, land payments, construction jobs, oil, gas to fuel, all the different construction activities, and the ongoing people that live here in the community. One other thing about that is this power is not going to Minneapolis. A lot of people have stated that. It's actually going to northern, the Arrowhead of Minnesota, which fuels taconite mining, creates iron ore, goes into U.S.-made steel. So this is a really cool story. Energy here is making U.S.-based steel. So any questions you have? I just, financially, this project, the North Dakota is taking the benefit of Minnesota-based individuals paying for the power.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dale Hitchcock, and I live right in the middle of the towers right now, and there's some of the most ridiculous statements I've ever heard in my life that's been said here tonight. The gentleman before this one said that the noise in this room is the same as the wind towers make. Come on out to my place and we'll show you what that sounds, whoosh, 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 all night long. I don't hear that in here. So that's a ridiculous statement. And as far as the cows lounging underneath those wind towers, drive around out in my area, and you don't see one cow underneath those wind towers, which is definitely not true. And according to the ALLETE spokesman, he said that the lights are out 77% of the time. Come on out to my place and see if the lights are out 77% of the time. What they did after they talked last time about those lights being out is the thing about it is they started shutting them off at 9:30, and they'd all start blinking at the same time, and then they turn them back on at 11 o'clock. Now, the thing about it is, if that's a coincidence, when daylight savings time come on, now it's 8:30 when this happens, and the thing about it is it turns back on at 9:30. Now, how could you have that kind of a coincidence? It just doesn't happen. So the thing about it is, the other gentleman said something about the ridiculous road kills. There's more roadkill on the highways than there is around the towers. Well, what do you see? Maybe five, six deer in the summer on the roads, but there's no deer up in our area anymore. And there was when I first came. So the thing about it is, there was no towers there yet. So basically, what I'm trying to say is, I hope that you folks shoot these wind towers down because basically, all the talk that's going on tonight is ridiculous from the gentlemen's that are collecting money, and that's what this is all about, how much money they can put in their pocket. Thank you.
Thanks, Dale. Brief, Jim.
I'm in this business, I've been in it for a long time. I've built it up from ground. I'm a rancher. We also go ahead and we train horses. We ranch on horses. We use horses. We move cattle. As far as the car kill, believe me, I see it all the time. I'm eight and a half miles south of Beulah. I'm only a mile and quarter off the interstate, around Interstate 49, and we see a lot of deer. But we got more deer population now. In fact, they took, we took five mules off our place and then off our land by using management and that for youth hunting and all that stuff. And we got, well, we took one old buck off. That was a seven by six muley buck. His ears were all poor and that. Plus, there was three other muley bucks that were running with him. They were all over four, four and five pointers. So the population is growing big. Whitetail deer, they gone. That disease wiped them out. Now, as far as the cows, believe me, my wife is sitting right there. She's a cow woman. She knows our numbers because we have to know our numbers when we're coming out of all the country we run in, and she can tell you. And when it's cabin time, she knows exactly where the cows come out of, what pasture they come out of, and that, and believe me, them cows are bedding down underneath the turbines. And if you want to go out and see it, we'll take it.
Jim, I'm going to, I'm going to ask that we try not to, I totally understand. We had this last time, conflicting views. A lot of this is very subjective. I understand.
I don't feel like to be called a liar.
Understood. Thanks, Jim.
Hi, can I make a comment from online?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Janelle Mormon. Just popping on here, I was at a meeting earlier today, so maybe some of these points were already discussed, but just wanted to reiterate again, I do reside in Morton County with these proposed wind farms, you know, again, right in my backyard. Breaking up the beautiful view shed that we've all come to, you know, appreciate out here. We talk about $25 million, okay? That's for the project of 35 years. That's less than three quarters of a million dollars per year. That's a big, it's a big county. How much of that money is actually going to stay in this area? You know, a lot of it's going to go to Mandan. We're a small area. $25 million, sounds like a lot of money. Over 35 years, it's not. I really would like a answer to why the necessity of a 55-year-long easement is necessary on a project that was stated to be 35 years, and there is no plan for anything after those 35 years. That came from ALLETE saying that. So I'd really appreciate an answer to that question of why the easement of 55 years? Why do you need access to our land for 55 years if the project is only slated to do 35 years? Again, I just wanted to reiterate how I am in opposition of this, and I just hope that you guys still find your decision how you did the last time and vote no on this. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Janelle. Go ahead.
Hey, so, my name is Steve Cortina, and I've been in North Dakota for about 30 years, a little over 30 years, I should say. My career started in the wind farm. I started right here in North Dakota, right here at Tatonga Wind Farm. I helped build that from the ground up. The company I was working for took me all over the United States, helped build these wind. I've helped build a dozen wind farms across the United States. I've seen what the wind farms can do. It's done great for the economy, it's done great for the small, you know, the small cities and small towns. Also, it does great for the local workforce. So what I'm here to say that I do understand everyone's pros and cons, but if this do get passed by, I want to say that we just hope that it goes to our responsible contractor that knows how to take care of our land, because like I said, I've been here for over 30 years. This is my land too. So we'll just make sure we get a responsible contractor to do this project, and we get the local workforce on this project, nice and quick. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to limit second times to 30 seconds.
In response to that $25 million, I wish somebody that knows the numbers, that was just tax revenue. How much revenue goes into the individuals?
For all the landlords?
Yeah, if you want to come up with something, feel free to respond to it.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Matt Mormon. I'm a landowner in the wind project here. I want to show my support. I've been in, well, born and raised in Glen Allen, North Dakota, and, you know, I'm a rancher, a school board member, a fire department member, and I've seen a lot of benefit come from just this company back to our community. And I think it's important that, you know, we be open-minded to projects like this because without that extra income, you know, that really affects our first aid and fire and rescue. You know, I'm speaking on my behalf, not these different organizations, but I've seen it firsthand, so I'd like to show my support, and please vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Yeah, some rough order of magnitude math for the landowner payment, so it'd be about $60 million, somewhere in that 50 to 65 million additional revenue going back to the locals.
And that's over what time?
The 35-year useful life.
Do you want to just, I guess briefly clarify, because it might get asked again. So my understanding is 35 years is the life of a turbine, but there was a question about that time span if you want to touch on? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so we actually, within our organization, sister companies are operating turbines that are 30 years old, and at this time, we're repowering them. Depending on different efforts, we anticipate, some of the repowers are full tear down and construct new. You go back to the landowners, get new land agreements, and you move forward with that path. So other repower options is, you can think about it more like a tractor or something like that, replace the transmission, drive train blades, other things like that. And in this case, it'd be a generator, gearbox, and blades, and then keep things mechanical and moving on longer than the useful life.
Mr. Chairman, a question. How many of your, how many people would be participating in this area where the farm's going to be going in? How many recipients would you have that you'd be paying?
So, going to make this a longer answer than, but try to hit all the different points. Long-term, we'd anticipate that there would be 10, 12 permanent, full-time employees based out of this facility. That's daily. As you do major service campaigns, they may rotate through another 10 individuals for roughly three, six months out of the year. During construction, a project of this size, we'd anticipate about 350 people, employees during peak. And those are actual people on site. That's not including individuals delivering fuel, diesel to support it, the local individuals, all the different things, and the revenues going back to the economy as well.
Maybe I should rephrase the question. How many landowners will be receiving benefits by participating as a, allowing you to put up the wind farms?
So there's 100 or over 100 participating agreements. So some of those are families, and I don't know the number of people offhand, but then there'll be 45 permanent turbines. There are other additional payments that continue, but that's, majority of that is with the turbines.
Mr. Chairman, John, one more question, because Janelle asked the question, there are 35 years, but she's asked about the 55-year life of the contract to the landowner.
Yep.
Can you explain that, please?
Typically, we've, well, different states, there's different land lease agreements and different term that you can run those through. That 50-year gives us a protection that we can work with the landowner. If we go through the repowering, either option A or option B of keeping the turbine there or tearing it down and putting a new one, that we can work through the agreements and after the life of this facility.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thanks, John. Next time.
Good evening. I'm Darlene Swenson. I'm Darlene Swenson, and I, we do have one turbine on our property, and maybe our cows are weird, but I've seen my cows laying underneath the turbines in the summertime, and I think they lay there because the wind flow is cooling to them, and so I don't agree with having my husband be called the liar. But anyhow, and the money that we receive, we get a little over $19,000 a year, and that is very beneficial to our operation. And I share it with my daughter, and they're a young family starting out, and they greatly appreciate that. And so I'm totally in favor of this, and like I said, I've never seen any deer or anything dead around the turbine that's on our property. I'm not, you know, I've never seen anything there. And so I even totally agree with them having, increasing the turbines. Thank you.
Thanks, Darlene.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Todd Simmons. I work for Minnesota Power. Janelle, I'm going to try to answer your question on the 35 and the 55 and how that works. So when we put a project forward, it's got to have a 35-year life in order for it to have a payback. I'll compare it to our Boswell Coal facility. We built it in 1976, and the other unit, 1981, they have a 35-year life as well, but we've been running them a lot longer than 35 years. So in those cases, we bought that land. In this case, we leased the land. But just because 35 is the minimum, we're trying to get out of that, and that doesn't preclude that we're going to try to run them longer. We maintain them so that we can continue to run them, and like John explained, sorry, we continue to maintain them so that they can run longer. So I don't know if that helps answer it for, but that's why you see two different numbers.
I was having you, Todd, the lady, Janelle, on the, on the phone was asking, okay?
Yep, perfect.
Yep, thank you for just.
Yep, no problem. And all I would add is that, you know, Minnesota Power is unique in that we're all of the above. We have wind, we have solar, we have the largest hydro in Minnesota, which by the way, has gotten one heck of a long payback period. It's been 105 some years old. We have biomass. We have, what am I missing? I'm missing something here. Well, we're working on gas. I mean, it's, it's a tough state to get gas put in the ground in, but we want gas as well. We need a lot of, we need flexible fuel to meet all of our requirements as a state, and we are one of the smallest utilities in the country, and we have six of the largest industrials in the mining industry in the United States. And we don't get there by making unfrugal investments. This, this project does work, and it fits with what we're trying to do for the long term. So thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Nope, I can't. Sorry. Time. Sure, you can ask your question, John.
I'd just like to know how much Minnesota Power is going to be receiving in tax dollars, tax credits, and tax subsidies from the taxpayers, especially the ones that aren't being compensated with $20,000 a year on these things.
And that's to the discretion, if you'd like to respond, answer.
Good evening, Commission. Chairman Kiss. My name is Cheryl Freilich, and I'm a lifetime Morton County City of Mandan resident and an employee of BNI Coal. So I support coal and the wind industry, as Todd said, we're in all of the above company. I'm not directly impacted by the project, but I am a native of Mandan, and so this project does impact Morton County and Mandan residents. To me, $700,000 is nothing to sneeze at. That would be the annual contribution. be the annual contribution over the 35-year lifespan for this project for Morton County. Now, how that gets split up, I can't answer that. There were several statements that were made here that are just very concerning to me. And I'm all about being respectful and being courteous to not only my coworkers, but my fellow citizens. And it's just very concerning to me that we've lost some civility. And I just really ask you to understand that the Longspur Wind Project is compatible with Morton County's own wind ordinances, as described in detail in the project's application and is found in Natalie Pierce's thorough review and why reasoned recommendation to the committee that the project be approved with conditions. Longspur has gladly agreed to conditions recommended by Ms. Pierce and will continue to work with the county throughout the PSC permitting process, construction, and operation of the project. And to address Ms. Shepherd's comments about PTCs and tax credits, yes, there are PTC tax credits. Those are being phased out. The Trump administration has phased those out. But we also, if you're not aware, we have subsidies for coal and natural gas too. So when we talk about subsidies, let's be fair about it, because there are many things that are subsidized, include crops, beef, and so on and so forth. So I ask for your support of the Longspur project and respectfully ask you to vote in support as well.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Would you like me to make a point? I think there's your main point.
Yeah, I'm okay with you coming back up. I mean, Don asked a direct question. I'm okay with her response.
Sure. So, you're right, and I'm not, I'm not a tax person. I don't profess to be one. It's a, it is not millions that comes back to us in the form of dollars. It gives us tax credits to lower our tax rate. The other part that I guess, the way we've looked at it even before tonight's discussion, is that the difference in this case, if you're sitting in here and you're a participating landowner or you're a school board member, some of that tax benefit comes back to you in the form of salaries, wages, and money back into the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Mary Greener. I just found a headline. It said, "An unclassified military study conducted in Portugal over 20-year period was titled 'Low Frequency Noise: A Major Risk Factor in Military Operations.'" There's so much unknown. There's so much more information coming out about the infrasound. And you can talk to the people up in the Wilton area, friends of mine that farm and ranch up there, they said you can't find a deer, turkey, pheasant, nothing under those, I shouldn't say nothing. An occasional one will come through. There are, there's very little wildlife in those areas. I just wanted to make that point. And then, "Major conservative organizations and governments remain silent on the issue, prioritizing renewable targets over ecological concerns." Time's up.
Thanks, Mary. Go ahead, Mitch.
Commission, Mitchell Bettenhausen. I'm actually going to speak from a personal standpoint. I, without looking at everyone in the room, I probably live around the turbines more than anyone in this room. And I have sense about my house, my family, or that I married into, generational, we're four generations ranching. I don't know, eight, 10 turbines we ranch around. We farm around 10 turbines, no issues. I just shot 170-inch whitetail last week. There is a lot of deer in our area. You can come and watch all the hunters drive around every weekend, pheasants, deer, you name it. So, the claim there's no animals, there's a lot of animals. I live there. I live in the heart of the wind farm, literally the heart of the wind farm. So, the claims against animals, I guess I don't, I don't see it. There's a lot of, not just my cattle, a lot of cattle in the area, in the wind area, that they come to town here to go get sold. I guess I've never heard of any issues at the sale barn with wind turbines affecting our cattle. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mitch.
My name is Lyle Kinchiski. I spoke at the last commission meeting. I'm a fifth-generation farmer, and I got my sixth generation with me. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. But I brought pictures along to prove, can you get that?
Yeah.
Cows are underneath those wind towers. This was just last week. I conducted my own study. That's a joke. I really didn't. I was just going to the field to go combiding, and that's what I saw. So I took those pictures. That was one day. Prior to that was, these are deer, these are mule deer, just north of my place. Those are wind towers in the background, obviously, that you can see. Here, I got another one. This is kind of my favorite. This one shows, those are those bad boys up there just by Beulah. And I like coal. I mean, this one's in Little Valley. This one over here is going to be DG C. Where would we be without that coal industry in our state? I mean, it's critical. They don't bother me. I like it. And, and the same way it goes with those towers that are blinking by my farm. They are cell towers. Two cell towers to the east, one to the west. I still don't have service some days. It's crazy. But I don't. But there's two cell towers there. In this picture here, you can see, but there's three cell towers up in there. One of those might be an ADS-B tower. I'm not 100% sure about that. But there's definitely two cell towers up there. So, I'm in favor of this project. I just felt I wanted to come out here and, you know, support some of the people that say that there, there is cows, there's cows underneath it. And I just brought pictures to prove it. I'll, if you don't mind, I'm gonna leave this one. And I don't know how to do AI, so those are real Angus cows right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lyle. Now, do you want to, can you switch it back? I mean, I love the picture. Nobody can speak from online. Okay, so again, if there's anybody online, joined by phone, if you'd like to speak, now would be a good time to come off mute. Anyone else in the room that would like to speak?
I'm in the mood.
All right. So if there is nobody else, I'll let you, just, you said five seconds, but come to the podium if you have a quick question. I will let you ask it.
Simple ask question, far as revenue. If our average landowner got two turbines, that's like, let's say, rough estimate, $20,000 apiece a year, 40 grand, times 30 years, 1.7 million. Plus, you might get a higher tax bracket, which will go back to your government then.
Anybody else in the room that would like to speak?
Can I comment?
Absolutely.
On mine.
Um, I guess, I'm Dan Fraser. I live right south of the wind turbines right now. I'm watching at about 30 of them blinking outside my window. I'm a registered engineer in the state of North Dakota. I did run some numbers for some people here quick. So, let's just talk about the $25 billion over 35 years. Sounds like a big number. But with that reduced due to a even inflation rate of 3%, you're looking at a total contribution of $286, $286,000 in today's money in 35 years. There really seems like one state, Minnesota, is winning out on that. The same with the $19,000 that everybody is thinking they're going to get in 35 years. That's now worth $7,600. So, do you want to sell off your rights right now to your, that would go to your kids for $7,600 a year? What would that building site or that land be worth without that wind tower there? We talked about the workers that are here. We all know that most of these workers are going to come to the area and leave the area as soon as the project's done. How many of the people that were talking today were North Dakota residents that were working for the company? I counted two. All the other experts that were supposedly here were either paid-for people that were brought in by the company, or they were part of the company already. Now, they talked about the electricity is going to go to support iron ore and building this great state of the United States. We don't really know where that electricity is going to go. That all goes on the grid. That's bought by other people throughout this, throughout the whole country. So, we don't have any idea where that's going to be. I guess if I could add some clarification on that, if Morton County gets to decide where that power goes, then who are we really supporting? More data centers, as I was stated. Also on the, you know, we talked about the animals. Right now, we do have kind of a unfortunate situation. I'd say most of these animals that do come through this area are migrating through quickly, or they're not really staying around. As soon as you start to densify these areas, I guess I'm not an expert on it, but I would say that some of those wildlife animals definitely won't be in the area.
Dan, you are at time.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
I can clarify a couple of people.
Yeah, I guess, sure.
When it comes to landowner payments, I understand the flat math he's doing, but there is an escalator that's built in annually for every landowner for that payment. So it does increase, or year after year for the entire term of the easement. And then he had a question around, how could we guarantee where the power's going? He is right. It's hard to quantify where it all goes, but in our case, it goes across our HVDC through our terminal, and then it goes back to Hermanstown, Minnesota, and it goes into our system. So not every electron, but that's the general route that our energy takes from Bison back to Hermanstown by Duluth.
Thanks, Todd.
Commissioners, my name is Eric Edison. I'm an attorney with Crowley Fleck, and I am local counsel for Minnesota Power for this project. And just, you know, to get it out there, the expert in the law is the judge in court, so I'm not trying to give some expert legal analysis or tell you guys how to do your jobs. But I do want to comment on a couple things on the recommendation for denial that came at the last meeting. So, under the North Dakota Century Code, Chapter 11, 3303, you know, county zoning regulations are to be made in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And I guess the way I think about it is, you know, the, the big policy goals are the comprehensive plan, and then you enact the ordinances to achieve that plan. And, you know, if you look at the Morton County zoning code, you know, Section 1-030, the purpose of the code is to promote public health and safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare through implementation of the goals and objectives of the Morton County Comprehensive Plan. So, you know, we've heard a lot of different things from landowners for and against this project, but one thing we haven't heard is any failure of the company to comply with the Morton County ordinances that relate to wind. You know, those, those are what signal to developers, here's what you need to do to comply with our code and, you know, to fit here in this county and fit in with our goals and objectives as a county. You know, I don't know the exact amount of time this project's been under development, but, you know, they've spent a lot of time and effort complying with these codes, and I think that should be given a good amount of weight as you consider your action on this application tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. You get your 30 seconds.
I just want to say, when, when we got our tower the first time, first year, it started, the base was at 15,000, and now it's over 19. It increases every year by what the, the power that's generated. So by saying that it's only worth $7,500 35 years from now, that's not really true, because like I said, every year it has increased by what the power that it generates. Thank you.
Thanks, Darlene. So, what I'd like to do, Todd, let's wait and see if everybody's done. I think your responses are really helpful. Let's just kind of try to, you keep notes. Let's have you come up at the end. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to come up and speak? Anyone new, especially?
Commissioners, my name is Mark Geetzen. I live in Bismarck, but I own land in that area out there from going on. And the question I have for these gentlemen here is, if it's such a good deal and it's so profitable, why don't they do it in Minnesota? Why do they need to come to North Dakota? That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Mark. Anyone else in the room that would like to speak?
Do they have an answer to that question?
So I, yep.
Can I make a 30-second comment?
Uh, yeah, yep, you get your 30 seconds.
Um, I guess, responding to the comments made by the Crowley Fleck attorney, you know, I don't know how many of you have been dealing with permitting that's been in the office or in that room, but we all know that permitting on ag land is regulated, and that when people purchase this land, it was bought for ag land and was bought for those views. And so that is changing the whole dynamic of that landscape. And that's something that seems to be passed by as soon as some money's thrown out there. That's all I have.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, one of the gentlemen said that the power was going to Hermannstown, Minnesota. There is no, to the Tachonite, or Tachonite mines, and there is no Tachonite mines in Hermanson, Minnesota. They got data centers there. So basically, it just seems like everything that's stated here is going around and around in circles, only to help the pocketbook in, as far as honesty, you know. Basically, I got more horses than probably anybody in this room, and I'd be scared to ride them underneath one of the wind towers because they'd buck me off. And, but
Thanks, Del.
They can get up here and say anything they want to, but it's not true.
Okay, second to last call for the hearing, both in the room and online. I am gonna, before I close, I'm gonna have Todd come up and give some answers. Third and final call?
Brady here, man in. With the man in here, my wife. I got no shake in the land. I got no shake in the turbines. I'm not getting paid anything. I don't even, I don't know 90% of the people in this room, maybe two or three. But I do work for a relocation company that moves people across the state and other places like that. And I will say one thing that, the roads, the roads and the way they're well-kept by these companies that come in and build these wind towers, and the infrastructure that they bring into these rural communities has been, you can't tell me that's not game-changing for the farmers. These roads are well-kept for as long as the facility's up and running, you know, 35-plus years, right? I mean, go down, drive, I mean, you could drive through the townlands up here, go down like Wishick, Ashley area where they're building right now. There's roads going through areas that didn't even have a road before, where people could, had to drive five miles round trip to get to a field, that now they can drive on a shortcut and get their equipment across or move cattle, or so on and so forth. And on the financial side of things, I mean, essentially, it's a generational wealth for some families. And firsthand, I have seen families that And firsthand, I have seen families that are able to either better their home or relocate to another facility, or get into, um, a senior center that they might have not been able to afford before because of the income that they now have coming in that just wasn't an option. Insurance doesn't cover all these costs. And we are moving people from all over the place. Now, I'm not here to debate, I mean, everybody can have their own beliefs, everybody here's got their own versions of why they're for or against it. I'm not here to debate that. I am just here to give you examples of firsthand experiences that I've had, that I see. Um, I have friends in the oil and gas industry. I have friends at Farm and Ranch, and none of them have a problem with it, other than, none that I know, anyway. But, thanks.
Thanks, Brady.
I am wondering if I can just say something really quick. I'm online, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, my name's T. Jabetnausen. I am a fourth-generation farmer and rancher. I do live just right, basically, in the heart of all the wind towers, the Bison Project, the Lonsper Project, and also, um, kind of close to the Oliver, uh, wind farms. I just want to speak kind of to the health perspective of, um, the wind turbines affecting health. Um, I know someone had mentioned cancer. I am a nurse, I do work in the cancer, uh, I guess oncology unit. I'm starting to, starting there to now, we've had an increase in cancer, um, in general, and that is never anything that is directly related to, uh, a wind tower, that I can say. Um, you know, we do have a lot of studies that go along with sport and farming in general, um, and so there's a lot of things about that, but I just want to say as well, like, working in research and studies, that, you know, if you Google, you can find any kind of study you want, um, basically to what you're looking for. What you really have to keep in mind is, um, when you're looking at a study, is what it entails, how big the cohort is, and everything that they're studying, and making sure it's actually accurate. Um, so I just want to say that, and that, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else in the room? Or online? Final call. Todd?
Alright, thanks again. So, in terms of labor, first, I'll say this, we, we follow fair labor standards, but it is our goal to hire as local as much as possible. Um, it, it fills a lot of positive needs. Number one is, it is giving back in hearings to me that lives here and wants to stay here. That is important to us. Um, the gentleman on the phone, I'm for, sorry, I forgot your name. You, you are right, not every one of us up here today, like, we, we do, we work across a lot of states, we work a lot, you know, a lot of different areas. Um, that said, there's a lot of folks in here that are with our project that aren't speaking tonight, but are sitting in here, and if you want, you can raise, buy hands, there are more that do live and reside here than just what spoke, so. Um, i- if you want more questions answered on labor, I'll try to do my best, but that's a general statement. As far as a resource goes, is it Mark? Mark, um, we build hydro where there's hydro, and in this case, we build, we put, are soliciting to build wind, you have a superior resource of wind in North Dakota. It's a capacity factor that's in excess of 50%. You can't find that in northeastern Minnesota. That, that is why we're here. That, that, that's the short answer for you, so.
So, I'm gonna, yep, no, you know, Todd, you're, you're fine, I just, I don't want back and forth, it's, it's challenging for anybody on line.
Sure, fair enough, alright, but to answer that question, yes, so, uh, you can go up, there's studies that are done by, um, people that study wind, where there are good resources, right, for wind. Um, this area of North Dakota has a superior resource, there's a whole corridor, if you will, so. Um, the other reason is, you've heard from Cheryl and others, we've been here, I know that we haven't been here in wind, but the HVDC line, when Mankota built, which is we call the Square Butte, um, uh, Operating Committee, we have taken coal from North Dakota because we don't have coal in Minnesota either, and we have taken those megawatts, and we have shepherded them, which I think answers the gentleman's question over here. Herman Town isn't on, on the range, it is south of the range. We've had that line in service since 1977, all the way up to 2009, which, at which time we had an arrangement with Mankota whereby we bought out the rest of the line, they took back the megawatts on Young 2, and we then began pushing wind across that same line. But for, you know, for the life of the, um, the first 20-some years of that, um, project, we bought coal-generated power back from Young 2, so. I think that's all the questions, so.
Thank you, Todd.
You're welcome.
Okay, and with that, I will close the public hearing. Thoughts from the commission?
So, Mr. Chairman, um, I was gonna walk you through...
Yeah.
...the evaluation criteria, especially in light of what was sent back from the county commission, so.
Is that in our packet, Natalie, what you're gonna talk about?
Yes.
Okay. It was in the staff report.
Okay. Yeah. So, I'm gonna start with, um, future land use policy 1.5. So, in the, so the comprehensive plan has different components. The future land use component is color on a map showing different areas where we want certain land uses to go. Um, most of the counties, so, the comprehensive plan mostly focused on urban development around the city of Mandan. I mean, it does talk about policies for other parts of the county. It was very urban-focused, um, and that is how the goals were structured, um, that's how the whole plan is kind of structured. Um, and so, but of course, we do have, uh, you know, we get applications for rural industrial development, and you can't really pre-zone where you want those to go. We have a huge county, there's so many places that those types of uses could go, we can't necessarily say, here's the spot or the spots where these, um, projects could go. Um, so generally, they're just allowed to go on ag. So, in evaluating those projects, um, we, we have three criteria. Um, there are a number of policies that are at the end of the future land use planning section. Um, the only one that applies in this case is the 1.5. So, the first criteria, so there's three of them, and I guess staff would suggest that you put equal weight on each of those three criteria, since, you know, we don't talk about which one gets weighed more, I guess, to help you with the, um, your decision, I would suggest putting equal weight on each of these three criteria. So, the first one is, the proposed use should be inextricably linked to or dependent upon the proposed location and could not be easily located in any of the areas that have been designated in the future land use for the proposed use. And so, that speaks to, sometimes you do have a rural industrial use that could also go in an industrial area. You know, we don't have much, um, designated for industrial in our future land use plan. Um, we don't have anywhere designated for wind. So, um, we're thinking about, uh, is this inextricably linked to or dependent upon this location? The second criteria is, there should be adequate infrastructure and services in place to serve the proposed use. And so, we're thinking about, in the case of wind, we're thinking about roads mostly. Um, they, I'm sure they will use some water for, um, construction and so forth, but, um, probably less of a concern, so mostly roads, and then the distance to the interconnect, um, which in this case is relatively close as, um, you know, as opposed to being on the south side of Morton County and having to go all the way across the county to an interconnect. Um, and for the most part, the developer is gonna construct their own roads, or, you know, our policy is, if you are gonna impact a road, you have to bring it back to the condition it was in or better, um, after your project, and also maintain it during the life of the project. Um, so that's what applies for the most part, is the interconnect and roads. And then the third criteria is, the proposed use should further the goals of the comprehensive plan. So, um, I think the goals that could potentially apply, um, the last motion talked about Goal 1, Goal 2, um, I think Goal 6 and 7 could apply as well. And again, the goals in the comprehensive plan, some of them, or most of them are more urban-focused. They talk about, um, residential development. Um, we do have one about noxious weeds, so that's more ag-focused, but most of them are, um, talking about residential development. So, Goal Number 1, agricultural and ranch lands are preserved for those uses. Um, this, the sub-goals or the, um, objectives and policies under that goal talk about preserving ag land so that residential development doesn't sprawl into ag land, but I guess you could think of this in terms of the question of, does approving a wind energy project further the likelihood of agriculturally-zoned lands continuing to be used for farming and ranching? That could be how you could frame that question. So, is approving a wind energy project going to preserve ag lands, ag and ranch lands for those uses? And think about it that way. Goal Number 2, rural character and scenic beauty continue to be defining features of the Morton County landscape. The objectives and policies in that section speak to view sheds from Fort Lincoln State Park, scenic waterways, critical habitat areas, and along community gateways close to the city of Mandan. So, those are what the subtopics under that goal speak to, or you can look at it exactly as it is written. The goal says, rural character and scenic beauty continue to be defining features of the Morton County landscape. Uh, Goal 6, the Morton County economy is diversified and growing. Uh, the policies and objectives under that goal speak to identifying and preserving lands for industrial and commercial use, so that we don't, um, let resident, again, residential kind of choke-out locations that are better suited for industrial or commercial. Uh, the sub-goals under that one speak to pool of skilled labor is increasing, so those are the two main things under that goal. Um, but again, on its face, you can just take it the way it's written, um, and you could look at this in terms of, um, energy production contributing to a portfolio of diversified inputs into the Morton County economy. Um, you could look at it that way. Goal Number 7, chosen locations for development in Morton County do not increase potential hazards to public health and safety. Uh, subtopics under that goal include residential development in floods, flood hazard areas. We don't want to, you know, approve any residential development in flood hazard areas, um, and not, or thinking about proximity to hazardous materials when we're approving new residential subdivisions. So, again, speaking to residential development under that goal, but again, you can also read it exactly as it's written and apply it that way, um, that they don't increase potential hazards to public health and safety. So, that's the sub-part of the third bullet under, you know, Policy 1.5 for the future land use, um, policy, you know, criteria for how you evaluate this, um, application. Uh, it was also suggested to look at the zoning compatibility table. So, this is in, uh, the comprehensive plan, it's in the future land use portion, so basically, we have our, our zones, you know, and these are, these are very similar, our future land use designation versus our zones. So, this applies when we have a zone change, and we're saying, okay, within, if we have a future land use designation of agricultural, obviously, open space, ag are primary for what zones we want in there, but secondary could be, ignore a state, but different residential could go there. Public, institutional, um, rural, commercial, industrial, limited industrial are secondary, um, that they can go there, but we, we prioritize leaving it as ag and open space. So, this doesn't really apply because we're not rezoning anything, um, so, but that was asked to be evaluated. Um, and then, just the Section 5-108 of the code that speaks to, um, standards for wind energy facilities, um, you know, I can put up the, the setbacks and the table that was in the first packet, it's in the second packet, they do meet all of their setbacks that are required. We have requirements for electromagnetic, or, um, you know, like cell towers, TV, radio, um, that putting up towers like, or turbines is not gonna interfere with those communications. So, the applicant did, um, contract with a company to identify what, you know, wave-emitting, um, entities exist that, that would go through this area. Um, so those are known, and it is the applicant's responsibility to, um, adjust how, you know, if once things are constructed and there's a problem, they have to mitigate it. Um, and so, that's already their responsibility, um, regardless of any conditions, it's just in the code, they would have to mitigate that. Um, and then, as far as environmental, we don't, environmental, historical, cultural, um, we ask that they submit that information to us at some point. Um, that is handled at the PSC level. So, so for the most part, they have abided by what's in Section 5-180. Um, it's not a huge, long list, um, but it, they, they have complied with what's in that section of the code. And then the conditions, uh, that were attached to the original staff report, and I put them in your, um, staff report this time, essentially, just clarifying that if this were, um, and these are conditions that staff is suggesting you apply if you were to approve this, um, that they can't put any components in the residential district. There is one property in the project boundary that's owned residential, and it's just, you can't put anything, um, any project component on that property because it's not zoned appropriately. Um, that the applicant must solicit letters of acknowledgement, acknowledgement from all parties that hold major infrastructure easements, um, within the project boundary, and letters should state any concerns or special considerations regarding impacts of the project on existing infrastructure, and these letters should be submitted to the zoning administrator as soon as practicable and at least 90 days prior to the start of construction. Uh, really thinking about pipelines, major pipelines, um, just so that those, um, infrastructure and easement holders are aware of what's going on. Um, all lighting shall be shielded directly toward the ground unless otherwise required by another permitting authority, so obviously, FAA, they have their own rules for not telling them to not follow those rules, but just anything in the operations and maintenance, lay-down yard, anything, all that lighting should be directed directly to the ground. Um, and then, prior to the start of construction, the applicant must develop and execute a road use agreement that meets the satisfaction of the county engineer. That's a typical condition that we would put on any rural industrial special use permit. So, those are all the considerations that, um, the county commission motion, you know, wanted this board to look at again. So, then I just bring you back to that future land use policy 1.5, those three criteria, um, and Criteria C, then that branches off into meeting the goals of the comp plan, so then that gets into the goals of the comp plan. Um, but that's your criteria, basically, for evaluating the merits of this project, is those three criteria.
Thanks, Natalie. Thanks. Questions for Natalie?
I, I just have a question, um, for instance, Glen Allen School, with the money coming in, how is it determined? Do they get money? I mean, I know it's a process and everything, but can they plan on help for their school, or does it have to go through the Mandan School District or the commissioners? How do they even know for sure if a small-town school actually gets the money from all this? I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, the, any property tax that is developed off these wind turbines, nine out of 10 times, is gonna be used to buy down the property taxes of everybody else. Now, if a certain amount of money is supposed to go to the Glen Allen School District based off this, that would have to be covered by state tax law. But the vast majority of the money raised, uh, property tax raised by these projects buys down everybody else's property taxes.
I do have a note from Dawn, Andy. It says, the wind tower pay generation tax, which is allocated, just, is allocated just like property tax. So, if a particular wind tower is located in the New Salem Fire, New Salem Ambulance, New Salem School, Morton... New Salem school, Morton County water, et cetera, it would be allocated in proportion to the current mill levy for that taxing district. And I got that from Auditor Rome.
That'd be right.
Does that help Becky?
That was one of the questions that was asked of me, so.
Okay.
I don't know if it helps anybody else.
Other questions from the board?
I guess I'd like to speak to the health effects. I did dig into it for every, for every study you find against them or that it's bad for health, there's another study that is, that negates that previous study. It's so undeterminable without further long-term studies, I don't know that you'll ever know. And that goes from the audible sound to infrasound to, I mean, it is like, one of the commenter said, you go online and depending on what you're looking for is what you get fed. And so, it is, there's so many studies for, so many studies against. Some of the things I did find, unless something more recent has come out since about 2021, wind turbine syndrome is not a recognized medical term or medical diagnosis to any national US recognizing board. So, the, you know, Board of Medicine, the FDA, wind turbine syndrome is not a recognized condition. Unfortunately, like I said, I don't discredit anybody who spoke. These are the findings I found digging into it. Unfortunately, it's inconclusive more or less.
Mr. Chairman, just some observations that I want to make. Last time we met, at the last plan zoning, it was primarily oppositional. You know, we heard a lot of testimony and things that was primarily opposition. We didn't hear that much at that point in time, you know, concerning support and issues that leaned, that leaned toward that particular area. And I received, you know, quite a good amount of information prior to this meeting from written documentation, input and things like that, that I needed to review and digest and, which makes it difficult, it's a very contentious thing. I did note that, however, I did not find any strong delineation and argument that refuted certain contention. So, I didn't find out where the noise hazard was actually refuted, you know. It was contented maybe, but I didn't see any absolute refutation of that. I didn't see where the hazard to animals, the hazard to animals was come out and shown to be a real problem. It was contented. And there's some thing about ailments, cancer and things, I didn't see where those were great support either. So, there are some things here that I didn't see strong contentious for evidence, you know, to support these particular aspects of the arguments. And, you know, of course, there are other things we have to consider here as well, but those are my observations.
Anything else from the board? Is anybody ready to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I do have, like, two things I probably want to say. First of all, I appreciate everybody showing up because I think that that was one of the biggest things last time that happened was we had nobody show up that wanted this wind farm. This time, people want it. So, that helps a lot and I want to encourage everyone in this room to encourage folks to help make those kinds of decisions in the future if it happens. Second of all, Natalie, I think last time we talked a lot about there's two more wind farms that are potentially within the queue in the county. So, in just looking at the density of the wind turbines, a lot of them end up in this area in general. So, I had asked Natalie to look at other neighboring counties to see what kind of, what everybody else is doing. So, you can see from the map, it's all kind of in the northern area, which is pretty strong. So, for future reference, if those two wind farms go in, it's going to be nothing but wind farms in northern Morton County.
So, the, again, it'd be somewhere, somewhere between Bison and Oliver. So, it'd be somewhere in here and then roughly there. I mean, so basically, it's sort of the, and this is shaving off the, this is just the northern portion of Morton County.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, that's northern Morton County.
Yeah. But yeah, so that'd be, that'd be kind of a good chunk of northern Morton County.
Right. So, I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, we talked a lot about when is enough enough last time we were here. So, we got to think about that going forward. Like, that's a lot of wind turbines. So, those are just two couple, two things I wanted to just briefly point out that it's going to be a lot in the next however many years because I checked the generator interconnection requests this morning and I didn't see any GI requests for either of those two other wind farms, only this one, so.
And I guess to speak to that point, I think Morton probably has a lot of wind because in looking at other people's setbacks, and I mean, I didn't, it wasn't comprehensive, but I think the model ordinance that had gotten rolled out at some point, I think it may have said 2,000 feet from an occupied dwelling and ours is 1350. And so, that's a lower threshold, you know, lower threshold, easier to locate. And then, also just that we are close, like Oliver, Oliver, I spoke to staff from Oliver and they said, some legislators had said to them, you know, you're, you've done your fair share for the state. They have, they have a lot of projects as well. Morton has quite a few, you know, as compared to some other counties. And I think that's proximity to interconnects is part of that as well.
Yes, and we had hearings, what was that, a year, year and a half ago?
About changing those setbacks.
About changing those setbacks.
Yeah, and I think that was at a time when there was a lot of talk about, you know, these upcoming projects and a lot of landowners who have interest in those projects who were at those hearings.
Right. So, I just wanted to point those things out, that they are future things to be thinking about for our county as a whole.
Chairman Natalie, if the safe word, if you wouldn't approve this, does that preclude others from being able to put one in if we're going to file a specific or normal criteria?
So, when you look at a project, you have to, you know, you have to have your reasons for denying it. And I guess I would go back to those three criteria and you have to evaluate, and there hasn't been any discussion on those three criteria, I guess I would encourage you to discuss them. You know, how does this project meet or not meet, you know, each of those criteria? And then, you come up with reasons why it does or does not belong there. And each project is evaluated on its own merits and based on the location and everything. Just if you deny one thing, it doesn't mean you automatically deny everything else. I mean, in the same way that we've had residential subdivisions that, you know, they didn't have enough water in a certain location, it's not the right location for that residential subdivision. So, you deny it, it doesn't mean you're never going to approve residential subdivisions again. So, I mean, you look at each project based on the criteria that you're supposed to use to evaluate that project.
I guess I just want to quick build on some of those comments and thank everybody for showing up tonight, sharing your comments. It was definitely a different dynamic tonight than last time with opposing viewpoints. Dennis mentioned that it was primarily opposition last time. I guess I'd counter to that and say it was exclusively opposition other than the applicant. So, it was a very different dynamic and just appreciate everybody showing up and speaking.
Other thoughts from the board? Do we want to, does anybody want to talk about any of what Natalie's put together?
Mr. Chairman, I guess when I look at goal number two, I have a hard time using that as a justification because Fort Lincoln Park is, Fort Lincoln State Park is specifically named in that. And so, is it?
Do you want clarification about how they're laid out?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so basically, you have the broad goal. So, when we list the goals in there, such as, you know, number two, rural character and scenic beauty continue to be defining features of the Morton County landscape. Okay, so that's a goal. And then, you have to talk about how do we get there?
Okay.
And so, there, some of them are objectives underneath the goals, some of them are policies, some of them are implementation steps. And so, the ones that we specifically call out, one of those policies is that, you know, we have that view shed protection area for Fort Abraham Lincoln. We actually, we lifted that moratorium, but, you know, that's a whole discussion. And then, community gateways, you know, like that we have our policy of tree plantings along community gateways, that kind of thing. You know, so these are just different steps and policies that we can take to reach that goal. Have we covered everything that would possibly lend itself to rural character and scenic beauty within those goals and objectives? No. I mean, yeah, we were very focused on urban development in the kind of urbanized area
Natalie, can you switch it back so that Dwayne can talk?
I guess I'll make one more comment about the goal number six because yesterday I was at a FFA event and visiting with some constituents that live in the Hebron area and they talked about their struggles to keep the restaurant open, even to get it open and to keep their grocery stores running. And so, I think the idea of having more jobs in some of these smaller communities is a really important asset for these communities. And so, I think that's very important. I visited with a couple of them that talked about it, how important that is. And I know that Glen Allen and Hebron both struggle with both of those. And in fact, their restaurant now that's open also provides the senior meals for people in that community. And so, the rest of the senior meals come from Mandan because there's no place to do it in these smaller communities.
Shortly after our last meeting, had the opportunity to actually go up to the Bison Wind Towers, to the Minnesota Powers facility up there, their maintenance building on an exercise with the local responders, Morton County Emergency Management. There is benefit also in the fact that if the communities engage these companies and visit with them, a lot of times, they're more than happy to provide training, information, whatever it may be. I mean, that exercise, we found a few things that would benefit the responders in the area and the company is working on it. I know we have other things coming with, you know, larger things, whether it be data centers, whether it be CO2 capture. I think too, if the communities work with these companies and visit with them, they'll find that the companies are willing to provide training and things to make the community safer regardless of what they're doing. Any training provided to first responders and those types of things benefit the community long after these projects are gone. So, that's something to keep in mind with these, they're, you know, just my two cents, I guess, on first responders and different things that are going on out there as well.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion if you're ready.
I'm sure he does.
Ready Andy.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to recommend to the Morton County Commission to approve the request from Minnesota Power for a special use permit for a wind energy conversion facility known as Longspur Wind Project on approximately 26,000 acres located in the various sections of Township 140 North, Range 88 West, Township 139 North, Range 88 West, Township 140 North, Range 87 West, Township 139 North, Range 87 West in Morton County. As the project complies with the future land use policy FLU 1.5 and Table One zoning compatibility, secondary compatibility zoning districts all within the Morton County 2045 Comprehensive Plan. Project also complies with section five dash one eight zero of the Morton County Land Use Code along with the recommended conditions of, number one, wind project components may not be developed or installed on properties that lie within the residential zoning district even though such properties may lie within the proposed project boundary. Condition number two, the applicant must solicit letters of acknowledgement from all parties that hold major infrastructure easements within the project boundary. Letters should state any concerns or special considerations regarding impacts of the project on existing infrastructure. These letters should be submitted to the zoning administrator as soon as practicable and at least ninety days prior to the start of construction. Condition number three, all lighting shall be shielded to direct light toward the ground unless otherwise required by another permitting authority. Condition number four, prior to the start of construction, the applicant must develop and execute a road use agreement that meets the satisfaction of the Morton County engineer.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Okay, not hearing any, I'll call the role Wald.
No.
Zach Meyer.
Yes.
L.
Yes.
Buckley.
Yes.
Braun.
No.
Berger.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Tomac.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, then pursuant to North Dakota Century Code 440420, I will open the public comment period and note that I did not receive any comment cards ahead of the meeting. So, second call for the hearing, third and final call, and I will close the hearing. Ready for a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody.